Okay, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Giles County Board of Education. Mr. Lovell's gonna do our prayer and Mr. Brewer's gonna do our pledge.
I'll stand. Let us pray. Father in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Father, we thank thee for so many blessings that we enjoy each day. We're thankful for Giles County, heaven, Father. We're thankful for the school system we have in Giles County. Many of the decisions and the work we do here tonight being beneficial to our schools. And, heaven, Father, we just pray that you forgive us of our sins as our prayer in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Blessed are we, Jesus, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. We do have one thing that we would like to kind of shuffle around. In the director's reports, there's some recommendations. We would like to add that to new business. Do I have a motion to do so? I'll slow down. Have a second.
I have a second.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. I would like to welcome all the guests here tonight. It's good seeing all these folks out on a nice cold night. Appreciate you guys being involved in the school systems. Welcome of guests. Mr. Smith, do we have any guests or anything?
Uh, no.
No, I just did that, I'm sorry. Something else. Ms. Goolsby, G C E A.
Yes. Hi. First of all, I'd like to say that we are now halfway through our second nine weeks and our school system is really running well. We have, as a teacher, I've heard nothing but compliments. Compliments of the board, compliments of our director. One of the things we'd like to see happen is everything settled down. And so I had sent out a questionnaire to our teachers to feel, to see how they felt right now. The two questions I asked them were, "Do you feel the current director's addressing the needs of our school system?" Yes or no? And, "Do you think the current director should be made permanent?" Yes or no? And so far, out of all the schools that I've received back, I've only received four schools back, I've only received two noes. And all the rest have been yes. Our school system is running wonderful right now. And I feel like it is not just Mr. Smith is doing that, but I believe that his leadership has helped this move along to a smooth transition. This new school board has gotten some compliments and so, good job, guys. But this is something I think G C A would like to see settled down and get our principals settled in and our directors settled in and that issue settled. So if we could, G C A does endorse Mr. Smith and we would like to see that happen as a permanent position. Is that okay?
Thank you. Mr. Smith, student staff recognition. Do we have anybody to recognize tonight?
No, sir. I don't know of anybody that we're gonna recognize tonight, but hey, we've got a lot of people working hard. Teachers, students. So anybody in particular? No, sir, not tonight.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. First item is the minutes of our last board meeting. Do we have any motions on that?
I'll second.
Got a motion to approve in second by Mr. Holt and Ms. McMasters. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Does not look like we have anything else on the consent agenda until we get to the overnight field trips. Mr. Smith, would you like to speak on those?
Yes, sir. We have two field trips. The first by the Giles County High School FFA members, they're going on an overnight trip to Doyle, Tennessee. And the second trip is the Richland School Beta Club. And they're going to Nashville to an overnight field trip. And I move that, I recommend that both these field trips be approved, please.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second by Ms. McMasters and then Mr. Brewer. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next item on the agenda is budget and finance. Do we have anything there? That's kind of a loaded question. Okay, we'll move on. Old business. We have second reading of two policies. Policy one is 4.6, the grading system. Policy two is 3.5, the food service management. Do we have a motion on those? Do we have a second?
I have a second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Under Director of Schools, under old business. Yes. This has been put on the agenda. We are, we have had some discussion in a work session about how to go about the process of a director of schools. So I will open the floor to the board for comments or a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Mr. Lovell.
I think we talked and, you know, I just make the motion that we advertise a school director and take applications as soon as possible. Working, you know, we're gonna work through our school board lawyer, which will cut down on the costs. And we need to have a work session as soon as we can to get this started.
Other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I disagree with that from Mr. Lovell. I think the board need to be open up to take a vote. We've just got great remarks from Ms. Goolsby coming from the schoolteachers. Four schools to noes. I would like to take a vote tonight.
Do I have a second? Because I believe the operational orders, we deal with her motion and, no, your motion and then we'll deal with your motion. So do I have any other discussion? Okay.
Your motion was to go through the process with our attorney, where the variable costs involved, and advertise the position.
Right.
Okay, so that is Mr. Holt's, uh, Mr. Lovell's motion. Do I have a second for Mr. Lovell's motion?
Second.
Mr. Brewer has seconded. All those in favor of putting out for bid a director search and doing it with our local, or our board attorney and not through T S B A, all those in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Kristy, did you vote or abstain?
I abstained.
Okay. I guess I need to do a roll call on it because I don't know who did what. Glover?
I abstained.
Aye.
Ms. McMasters is aye.
Aye.
Mr. Lovell's aye.
Aye.
Brewer's aye. Ms. Turner?
Opposed.
Mister Holt? Okay, the ayes carry. Now, to take up Ms. Turner's, does, do we have a second for Ms. Turner's? So we will do a director search. Now, I guess in this meeting, we will also need to lay out how we will go about this director search.
As read, we need to have another work session as soon as possible.
Okay, so we want to put that to a work session. Is that, that's a recommendation to put it to a work session? Do I have a second to put it to a work session?
I'll make a second.
If we've not already covered this in the work session, we have, uh, hold on, Chairman.
I believe that we have to lay out the specifics of exactly where we're going to advertise it at, how long we will leave it open, when we will do all of the, you know, we have to lay out all the finite pieces of how this process will work. At some point, we will also have to lay out the questions that we plan on asking. Do I have a second for Mr. Lovell's motion?
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. McMasters has seconded. Just will do a roll call vote on that. This is to set, or, no, this is for the work session. So all those in favor of setting it to a work session, we need to set a date. No, we need to pass it first. So all those in favor of setting this up as a work session, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now, we need you to set a date.
Is there any way that we could have a work session or a meeting before our December meeting?
Next Thursday night would be my suggestion. It's not that soon yet.
That's true. I will be available to have classes.
Move it to another night, next week.
Well, if we're gonna do this, we need to get it done as quick as we can.
Right.
Right. We have, Wednesday has been thrown out of next week. Does that work with everyone's schedule? Okay. All those in favor of making our work session next Wednesday night, which will be November the, what is that?
Nineteenth.
November the nineteenth. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We will see all you guys on November the nineteenth. At?
Five.
Five o'clock. All those in favor, five o'clock? Five o'clock, good? Sorry, I left that out. Five o'clock, good, Ms. Turner? Mr. Holt?
Yes, sir.
Okay. November the nineteenth, five o'clock. Okay. On to new business. Approval of the 2014 L E A compliance report. Mr. Smith?
The Tennessee Department of Education requires that each L E A submit a compliance report stating that all the schools are in compliance with state statutes and state laws and, in polling all of the principals, all of our, all of our schools are in compliance and our school system is in compliance with all of those statutes and laws. And I recommend that this be approved by our board.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
I second.
We have a second. Do we have any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor of approving the L E A compliance report, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the school bus purchases. I believe we were wanting to, um...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to suspend the rules and let Mr. Gonzalez go over what we and the, you know, the committee had talked about at our meeting.
Okay. Everybody okay with suspending the rules?
Thank you, Mr. Lovell. Thank you, Mr. Meeting Man. Can you ask me what are our needs of our upcoming school year for future transportation? Came up with the list and we need to make three purchases next year. First purchase needs to be a special ed bus. Estimated cost, ninety-six thousand dollars. Haven't taken bids on it yet, but that's just a rough estimate. Second purchase are three engines for school buses. And that's approximately eighty-one thousand dollars. What happened in 2001, five school buses were purchased. A V eight engine in those buses were known to have defects. They were told, you know, the school system was told that the transportation department was, but they went ahead and purchased those. And two of those engines have already blown. One we had repaired, excuse me, three of them are blown. Two of those buses are sitting down on the lot down there, not being used. And our options are, we can replace it with the same engine or we can change it over to a coming engine, which is proven reliability, durability. And it's, it's around twenty-seven thousand dollars to have that done. That's a turnkey project. Send it off, the people who do it, do it all. And there's a lot to it because with school bus, with school buses, the engine being has to match the body being. Everything has to be right. And the company that does this, and they do a lot of them, they, in fact, they do so many, they make a kit just for this, they keep up with all that. They make sure everything's right. So we're looking at three buses, three engines, and eighty-one thousand dollars roughly priced in one bus. The third thing we need to do, there's some upgrades we have to make in people transportation department. Number one is a tire changer. We're changing tires all the time. Machine down there is twenty-four years old, it's got a busted seal. We can't get repair parts for it. We caught Italy trying to find repair parts for it. We can't get them. And it can go any day and it's gonna be quite expensive when we start sending tires out on a constant basis to be mounted. The other thing we need is a wheel balancer. We've got an old bubble balance down there. What we're looking at is a computerized wheel balancer. The steer tires, which are the front tires on a school bus, three hundred and fifty dollars a piece. We have to take them off school buses because they have flat spots on them due to tires being out of balance. And that's just due to the nature of that bubble balance. We need a balancing machine that we can maximize the mileage of our tires on our school buses and it's gonna pay for itself. And that, that estimated cost is twenty-five thousand dollars. Next thing we need is a service truck. A service truck is a 1977 model. The floorboard is rusted out of it. For a fuel tank, when the bus runs out of fuel, there's a fifty-five gallon drum on there strapped down with, with the chain. The air compressor wore out.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Are you telling me that there is a tank, external tank strapped to the back end of this truck that furnishes the fuel for this?
No, sir, for the...
For, I mean, for the buses when he goes out?
Yes, sir. It's not a tank, it's a fifty-five gallon drum.
On a thirty-seven year old truck.
Oh, yes, yes, sir. It's just wore out, folks, and, and it's, it's a liability. What that truck is used for, when a school bus goes down, we, that comes priority one, we send a technician out there. The main thing is he has everything he needs to get that bus up and going if he can do it. And that includes changing a tire or whatever takes place. If it's not, we'll send out another bus to transport the students and we'll pull that bus in. But that truck has to be replaced. I'm, I'm afraid to send it out because if it gets in any accident, the liability be on us. Any questions?
Let's go back, let's, make sure I'm clear on this. And I apologize, and I can't talk as well as maybe I should. A lot of people say that's good, I'm sure. You mentioned that one bus is eighty-one thousand dollars.
No, sir.
Wait a minute, let me, so let me get through here. The cost of one bus, to buy one new bus was about eighty-one thousand, but you can do these three engines to get three buses running for eighty-one thousand. Is that, is that, did I hear that right?
No. Let me clarify that. We have two buses right now that are sitting on lots of flown engines that are not being utilized. I've got five buses that have this engine in it.
Okay.
So I know another engine's gonna blow, it's just a matter of time. So what I want to do is take the two buses, get them up back on the road and have that money set aside so that when the next bus engine blows, we can go ahead and, and take care of business and get it back on the road.
So basically, you're looking at putting three buses on the road for eighty-one thousand dollars as opposed to one for overnight?
Yes.
Okay. That's a question, that's what I was trying to clear up.
That's the best utilization of, of the taxpayer's dollar.
Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Gonzalez?
I've got one question. Where is the money going from?
Well, you know, I do know that after talking to the finance committee, that it was the money put into fund balance for school buses. And what I'd like to do, Mr. Chairman, is recommend the abortion that we go ahead and buy these three engines, the tire changer, the wheel balancer, and a service truck. And let him get bids on that one bus.
Okay. Mr. Lovell has made a motion. Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And the motion is, is that we will purchase the three engines, the tire changer, the wheel balancer, and a service truck and instruct Mr. Gonzalez to get bids on these special ed buses. All those in favor of that, say aye.
Mr. Chairman, before we vote, that service truck does include an air compressor and a fuel tank with a electric pump.
A D O T fuel tank for it, okay.
And I think that quote is somewhere between forty and fifty thousand dollars, right?
Yes, sir.
It's not a used truck, it's a used truck.
It's a used truck. So the cost is made for by the approved materials that come with the tank?
We'll, we'll, we'll purchase the truck and purchase the other components.
Okay, got you. Other stuff will be new, will it not?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have to get bids on that service truck too, though?
It, it depends. We're, we're part of a purchasing cooperative. We can work through the purchasing cooperative, we'll go ahead and get it. If not, we'll have to take bids.
And this used truck is already in this purchasing group and to, to be purchased that way?
We're, we're still looking for one. We don't have one. We've, we've got one in mind and I'll know more about it this coming week.
Any idea on the year model, anybody?
It would be a two thousand model.
So basically, do you know, how do you know it's gonna cost forty to fifty thousand dollars? You're just estimating.
That's an estimate. We looked at different trucks out there and, and took an estimate.
Okay, so on the floor, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Not opposed, so the motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. Okay. Next item on the agenda is roofing needs at G C H S. I'm gonna let Mr. Smith elaborate just a little bit on this for us. I know he has collected some bids for us, but, Mr. Smith?
Mr. Chairman, this is something that's urgent. This is one of those emergency purchases that we need to look into getting, like, last week. In order to give you more specifics about the roofing needs over Giles County High, I'm gonna ask Mr. Mike Watson, our maintenance supervisor, to talk to you about what the needs are, the bids that he has taken and received, and how soon this work can be done. Mr. Watson?
I went to Mr. Smith and said, just talked to him about the roofs of Giles County High. We've had two ladies in the kitchen that already fell over there because the floor was wet when they came in. I got bids, I got estimates from three vendors and I think Mr. Williamson, you know, kinda wanted me to get some local people to bid. I asked two vendors and neither one of them ever showed up. I met, went over there, waited, and they never came. So, I mean, I, I didn't know what I, there's not many people in the county that have a tire kettle that do, you know, that type of roofing. But I did find two and then they never came. But the roof that's there, you've got a diagram of, of what's needs to be done and it's twenty-plus years old, about twenty-five years old, and it's never had anything done to it. And, you know, it, we just, past board members, I've, I've told those and I'll, I'll tell y'all, these roofs are not something that's gonna get better. They're not gonna heal themselves, they're gonna only get worse, you know? And years passed, we had a roofing budget, but we hadn't had one in ten years. So if you don't do roofing each year, a little along, just like Mr. Gonzalez is busted, you don't buy a bus every year, then you're gonna come to a point when you have to buy a fleet of buses. And that'll be the way it'll be with the roofing. We don't start doing just a little roofing each year to try to keep these roofs underhand, there's gonna come to a point when we have to do it countywide, you know? And that's a lot of money. I had one figure, you probably got it there, that just to get the roofs that we have now up to a sustainable level, it's gonna be about seven-hundred-and-twenty-five to seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. I mean, and that's what I'm saying, that's several schools, you know? And we just keep letting them go from year to year. And we do what we can to keep the roofs in fairly decent shape, but, I mean, with the sun beating on them and drying them out and stuff like that, it's just a lot of roof.
Do any board members have any questions for Mr. Watson?
I do. Do you have a long-term plan to fix these roofs to, to give, to guide us?
Well, we have a roofing consultant, which is Stephen Ward Associates out of Huntsville, and they do our roofing. They'll, but they design any roofs that we need and they come and...
But does this county have a long-term plan on how to, to get out of this hole we're in?
Not, not as...
Maybe when you think about, you know...
As Mr. Watson stated, and if I can speak.
Sure.
As Mr. Wa, as Mr. Watson stated, there used to be in the budget, maybe four-hundred, five-hundred thousand dollars a year.
Four hundred thousand a year. Four roofs and, you know, I just don't wanna surprise you later in the year when we say this roof and that roof and this roof needs replacing. I mean, they're all, it's made on, you know?
I can speak, that, that Mr. Lovell, I'm aware of this money that used to be in our, in fact, Ms. Placey, who was one of our veteran commissioners, was one of the ones that was instrumental in getting this put in there several years ago, because that was one of her main concerns. And I think maybe this board, when we start planning for next year, I'll look at our budget very seriously and try to put some of this money back in for roofs. That's all I'll say.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to address Mike. Which one of these quotes do you like the best?
Uh, the cheapest one is fine. I mean, they, they're, they've done work for us before, so I mean, I have no problem. I had another vendor that, that bid, but I didn't include it in there because they gave me a quote and then about two weeks, I got a thing that their insurance had been canceled, so I didn't even include them in the, in the thing, so...
Will this, will this money get this building roofing?
Well, that's just, that's just, that's just patching it. Yeah, that's patching the perimeter and the wall of the auditorium for the...
You think that'll stop all the leaks?
Well, that, that's, that's gonna stop a lot of them. I can't say it'll stop them all, but, you know, it'll go a long way.
Mr. Holt? Will this stop that, or pass the area that the ladies have fallen?
Yes, it, it covers the cafeteria, all of the English, you know, part of the English wing, the outside wall of the English wing, and then the curved wall that's, it is the auditorium wall. You know, it's curved. So they're gonna actually wrap the wall, all the way up, cover the brick and everything.
Mr. Brewer?
What kind of guarantee does this, does this company have with their work?
Uh, it, you know, we, when we, if we ever let it, then we would get a, a warranty, you know, what, what, I mean, it's just a pack, so it's not gonna be, you know, a big warranty. I mean, probably a couple of years if that, you know, but...
The nature of the beast with the flat roof that was designed to be used in Arizona and New Mexico years ago, it would be a grand design to come, build cheap roofs in Tennessee. Wrong?
Yes, sir.
From the day one that you, that you build a flat roof on a school building, you're gonna be fixed. Is that something to think about from now on when we build a school? That it shouldn't have a flat roof anywhere around it?
Right. That's true.
Just to let everybody know that I'm, I'll never be in favor of a flat roof on not anything but a doghouse.
That needs to be slanted.
Man, all righty.
Mr. Watson, thank you.
Thank you.
So we have before us three bids. Do we have a motion?
I'm moving to accept a bid as recommended by Mr. Watson. Set vision E, Mr. Watson.
Yes, thank you.
Thirteen thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Okay, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Mr. Brewer has seconded the motion. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Okay. Under the next item, we have policies rescinded. We have a couple of different policies that I will let Mr. Smith speak about briefly.
Mr. Chairman, T S B A, Tennessee School Board Self-Station, has sent us correspondence to say that because negotiations have ceased, as in negotiating with teachers and the school systems across the state, these particular school board policies are no longer in effect or should no longer be in effect. And so they're, they're no longer statutorily valid as they quoted. And so I recommend then that we just remove these from our school board policies. And we will need to notify T S B A in order to take these off our website as policies in our, in all of our policies.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Do we have a motion, a motion to remove these policies from our policy book?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Ms. McMasters has made the motion, Ms. Turner has seconded. Do we have any discussion?
Did you not have, this in you?
Yeah, they're in there.
It's policies number five-point-nine-zero-zero.
Do we have any other discussion? I'd like to suspend the rules for just a second. Ms. Goolsby, I think with G C E A may have a comment to make.
I did never get a copy, so I don't know which ones were...
I'm sorry, Ms. Goolsby.
It's okay.[1790.87]
We've been a little shorthanded in the office lately, so we've been the best we could with it.
Well, it's just time for me to know which ones, so that I won't have, I...
Do you need my copy?
She just handed it to me.
Okay.
I'll look him up and...
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of rescinding these out of the policy book, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. There is one other little item under policies rescinded. I've been asked to look at the cell phone policy once again. Did any board member want to speak to that?
Well, Mr. Glover?
You go ahead, and I'll take that to you.
Well, at our, at our work session, we discussed this, and then at the TSBA meeting the other day, what was it, about a month ago, this is one of the topics of conversation, and we actually asked some of the other counties what their policies were. And I was surprised to find out that most school systems allowed the students to have the phones with them in the case of emergencies, as long as it was not used during class time. So that's just a thought. Is that, is that, and that what the general gist of it was?
I believe so. Did, is there any other discussion from any other board members on this topic?
Well, they also stated some of the, the county stated that it's a tool that they use in their classrooms somewhat, and I just feel like it, you know, that if it's any way they would control the use of them, and love using when it's needed to be used, and when it's available for them to use it, and to keep them using it when they're in class, I'd like to see us do that.
Any other board member? I'm gonna let Mr. Smith speak on it also.
Oh, yes, how we gonna control them? That, that's something that you'll probably have to discuss in work session, come up with a good idea hacking and control.
Any other board members that would like to speak in favor or against?
The only control being in those classrooms is with those administrators. So if they don't bind to our cell phone policy, we've made a policy that is not being followed and not being used. I think we probably need to update it after talking to other, it being at TSBA and talking to the other systems. But we need those teachers and administrators on board with what we do. So I think we, the work session is what we need with their opinions on how they go ahead. I do, I use them in my classroom. When I tell them to put it away, they put it away. And there are consequences that go with that. But it is a tool to use, and not to use the internet access and things that you have in the classrooms, and maybe the teachers are doing it already. I don't know what they're doing.
Mr. Brewer?
I think that I've made some comments upon those plans before, that they, because of being in the system with Ms. McMasters, that they were able to use them like she was talking about, and use them for something positive. And we've come up with a phase in which to make that work, to help us move along, because it's, it's something that they're going to have regardless of what we do sometimes. If we can teach them how to use it in a positive way, then maybe we can avoid some problems down the road.
Ms. Glover, you good?
To me, it's just gonna be left up to the kids knowing right from wrong, when to use it, when not to use it. And then if we do have a policy where they can have them in school, it's gonna be left up to the teachers if they misuse it. And of course, we'll have to set up some rules, but it's kind of an iffy subject.
Mr. Smith, I'm gonna give you the floor to speak on it.
Thank you. Cell phones and electronic devices probably is close to, are close to the top of the list of problems within every school. I know you guys just went through this TSBA. And it's ironic that this is even coming up, because over the last two or three weeks, I've probably received more emails from superintendents around the state around ideas asking what our policies were, because they were trying to do something with their policy. I want to first say that I'm not opposed to BYOD, you know, bringing your own device to class. That's not, that's not a problem. But the problem is policing it. You know, I was in Teleroma on Thursday to a Google workshop sponsored by Google. They, they have, there are sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students using Google Chromebooks and tablets. They have not introduced it into the high school because they don't know yet how they're gonna control the use of, getting onto all of the different sites that...
Through the ENA circuit, the filtration.
Yeah, the woman tried to say the personal, the sites where you...
Social media.
Social media, thank you, the social media. So they're, they're, they're struggling with that. As I said, the day is gonna come when it's a great idea, and as I said, I'm not totally opposed to it. But my suggestion would be, if we're going to say that we're gonna BYOD and we're gonna use devices in our schools, we need to have policies in place to say that if students don't conform to what we ask them to do, there needs to be some kind of repercussion. So there needs to be some rules stated, as Ms. Glover said. If we're gonna do this, there needs to be something in place. So... As I said, because I'm an electronics person, you know, I love it. But the social media, I don't know, I mean, we're getting off this a little bit. Have any of you heard of Yik Yak? Some of you in here have heard of Yik Yak. Yik Yak is a new social media, which is anonymous, that our students and students in the county, our county, have already begun to use. On the way to town the other morning, I heard, and it's strange because the day after we had talked about this in principal's meeting, two places in Huntsville, two students in Huntsville, I think it was, were arrested because they had phoned in bomb, bomb scare. Mr. Chung talked to me the other day about this happening in Chicago. They went, what, did I go to school, I think it was Chung, for eight days or something like that?
Over a week.
Over a week, because of, you know, these, these things on Yik Yak. But that's what I'm saying, these are things that we have to, you know, consider before we just say, okay, we open, open up our doors to our cell phones. And so I want to have maybe a work session to sit down and say, these are some of the parameters that we want to use it in case, I mean, if we're gonna change this policy. And I've given each one of you something I found on the internet the last couple of days. Just read it when you get a chance, just FYI.
So we've kicked this cell phone policy around now a couple of times. Do we have any motions on the floor?
Could we not add this to our work session next week?
We could. Do we have a second for that motion? We have a motion and a second by Ms. Glover and Ms. Turner. All those in favor of adding, revisiting the cell phone policy to our work session on November the nineteenth at five o'clock? Say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, we have, at the very beginning of this, we had a few items that we were gonna add to new business under the director's report. And I will turn the floor to Mr. Smith to go through some of those.
Mr. Chairman, each one of you have these recommendations I've given to you. I don't remember, let me just start, first of all, by saying that I'm going to name Kathy White as principal of Bridgeforth Middle School effective tomorrow morning. And so I want to say congratulations to Ms. White. I spoke with, I've spoken with a couple of you about the title that she had, and I think it's needed that she's not an interim principal, and she needs to be the principal. So tonight, I'm naming Ms. Kathy White as principal of Bridgeforth Middle School effective tomorrow morning. And now for items number two, three, four, five, and six. Number, number two is differentiated pay. For those of you in the school system and here on the board, you know that each school system had to come up with a plan to reward teachers for excelling in their classrooms, excelling with their students and attaining good grades, good scores. And our school system chose last year to use this differentiated pay as a reward. And many other school systems have chosen other avenues of rewarding their teachers. What I would like to recommend is that we pay all those teachers who qualified using their effectiveness score of five, a four, and a three. Those students, I mean, those teachers who acquired a five will be paid five hundred dollars. Those teachers who scored and had an effectiveness score of four will get four hundred dollars. And those students, those teachers who got a three, received a three as an effectiveness score, will receive three hundred dollars. The money's in the budget. This money has already been sent to the county to give and reward its teachers. So I would like to recommend that we go ahead and pay our teachers. And I'd like to do it December seventeenth, I'll lay a Christmas check for them.
Okay, we'll pause here for just a second for some discussions, and we'll, we'll pick off these items one by one. Do we have a motion to Mr. Smith's recommendation?
I'll make a motion. Do we do that?
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
We have a motion and a second. I will open the floor now for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, you know, after looking at this and talking to some people that put this in place, I think their intent was to have qualified teachers in the classroom just as much as they could, because when we have substitute teachers in, we lose some effective teaching. And sometimes, when you've got them in the classroom, when they're out, it's just a sitter is all you've got there. So actually, you held those two that day for those students. And that's the way I look at it. Part of the plan was to have these people to miss as few days as possible. That's just, that's just a comment I have.
Ms. McMasters?
I'd like to say that if these teachers have earned three, a four, or five, they are deserving of this. I don't care, I, I, they're in those classrooms, or they wouldn't have those scores. There's been years where you have small children, and you miss school, and you just raise them your family. And there's been years where your children are grown, and you do, you miss none. So there's different times and stages in a teacher's career when she or he are gonna miss more days than others. So I think they're deserving, and I don't like the five days that goes with it. That, in most systems, that attendance is not in regard whatsoever to this policy.
The thing with the five day where I have an issue is, teachers came to me, and what if I have a parent that's sick? What if my child is hospitalized? And when we come up with that five day, if Rhonda recalls, it was, well, they can come to, at the time, that director, it was like, they can come to me and we'll discuss, you know, that, basically, it was his decision. But to me, if you have a sick parent, you have a sick child, and you have to miss more than five, I don't think it should be held against you, because that's something each, every one of us, I'm sure, has gone through. So that's my problem with that.
We've also got those sick days, the teachers that earn any day. So that's like, you can use, that's like saying you, you can use your sick days, but I'm gonna punish you for it. And I don't like that. And I think that saying that, you know, about you're missing, if it's reasonable, then you've got sickness and that sort of thing, I have no problem with that.
Mr. Holt or Ms. Turner?
I just like, I'm like, Ms. McMasters, if they've been in that classroom, earned that score where they deserve a bonus. And Christmas, Christmas would be a good time, Mr. Smith, they all appreciate it, I can assure you.
Ms. Turner?
I agree with Ms. McMasters and Ms. Glover.
Okay, so we have a, go ahead, Mr. Glover, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I noticed in the budget that we've got money appropriated for those bonus differential pay. I wonder if we change that, is there gonna be more people than they anticipated, will we have the money in the budget to do this?
I believe the question is, differentiated pay is part of BEP funding, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And the state has issued that BEP funding to fund a hundred percent of this, or will the county have to take up a portion of this? I think is what we're, what we're asking.
No, sir, I mean, the state will pay, I mean, we have enough money to pay everybody what they're deserving of here.
Okay, okay. So we...
It's included in the current budget for our...
Yes, sir.
So we have a motion and a second on the floor to accept Mr. Smith's recommendations to move to a scale of five hundred, four hundred, and three hundred, corresponding to the five, four, three score. And they can miss no more than ten days in attendance in that process. All those in favor, say aye? Any opposed?
I do, I oppose.
Okay, motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Mr. Smith, in his director's report, had a insurance check.
We have a check that we have received from Mr. Jimmy Alson. I wanted to get the board's approval as to what we should do with the monies that he, he sent to us. My recommendation would be not to take it as a board, but to take it and use it per school. And that would be to share it and divide it among the eight schools, and receive two hundred and fifty dollars each from this check. And that would be my recommendation.
Okay, so Mr. Smith has made a recommendation. Do we have a motion on the floor?
I think that's an excellent motion, and I'd like to make a motion to approve it.
Do we have a second? Mr. Holt and Mr. Brewer have seconded, made the motion and seconded. I will open the floor for discussion now. Mr. Glover?
Yeah, I just, I read this, and the check we've received of Alson Insurance has the looks of a payoff. What are we talking about there? I mean?
Mr. Glover?
I mean, I know we've been doing this for ten years, a long time. I know that's happened, because when he was on the commission, he was, he was sending money out here back years and years ago. I don't understand why it looks like a payoff. I mean, tell me what, what part of this?
As long as I've been on the board, I cannot tell you exactly what the money is given to the board for, Ms. Turner. And we have had more feedback from the public of negativity on that. And don't get me wrong, I have no clue. I'm, I'm sure it's been budgeted as, as America, I tried calling man, uh, financial management today to see how it was budgeted. And I think it's under gift, but we've had more negativity, so to speak, over this one thing.
And we were questioned numerous times, and we questioned Mr. Jackson at that time when he was superintendent. He still didn't quite get a good answer, so.
Mr. Smith?
Tim Hawkins of Mr. Alson, he said that this was just a donation to the school system, and we could use it as we please. And the, the, the best way, and I, I guess I should, I should have worried it a little bit differently, so it didn't sound like a... But you know, to have heard the public, that was one of the concepts that they had, that this check was like a payoff from the insurance agent to the school system. And thus, I didn't want the school system to have to take the rap for taking a two thousand dollar check, and I would rather it be divided among the schools.
Well, I, I know back when we was on commission, we had the same problem. We talked to him about it, because, you know, we had questions. And what he says, that he just wants to donate that back to the school. And I have, I don't see nothing wrong with that, if he wants to donate back to the school. As far as your idea given at the school, that's perfect. I like that. Well, I just didn't understand what the looks as a payoff, I didn't understand that.
Okay, so on the floor right now, we have a motion and a second by Mr. Holt, Mr. Brewer. All those in favor of dividing this money amongst the schools, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Mr. Smith, emergency purchases?
Item number four is emergency purchases. I just stuck this in here because of the emergency, for trying to do something about the roof at Giles County High School. But I think that if we're going to have a work session next week, it's something that probably needs to be discussed about. If something actually came up, what would be the protocol about handling an emergency purchase? And what we might need to do? Because in the case of, let's say, spending fifteen, twenty, thirty thousand dollars and it being an emergency, school board would need to meet in a call session to spend that kind of money. And, you know, normally a call session, you have to have five days. Sometimes you don't have five days notice that you can give. So as I said, we need to look at it and see what we can do about that. So that's why that's in here.
Mr. Smith has made a recommendation to put this as another line item in our work session. Do we have a motion to that effect?
I make a motion.
Do we have a second?
Can I, as a question, is there a limit already, if some, if an emergency happens? Is there a amount already in place? I see this policy, but it didn't give any amounts. Is, is that what we, there's not an amount that you can spend to fix something quickly?
No, ma'am. There's no amount that's been stated anyplace.
Okay.
This is wrong about, really, about the financial management. This is one of the negative things about the financial management when those have been talked about in county conditions. If the head of department, such as yourself, or Mr. Hyde, or somebody needed to have an emergency purchase, they'd have to go through all sorts of rules or rules to get it done. Whereas in the past, if something was needed, the head of department would just buy it. So I think this is probably reflects back to the rules and regs of that.
So will it be something that we can do to give him a minimum amount, or is that illegal with the financial management group?
I think there is, I think there is a limit that he can go up to. That might be something we might ask in this mode of work session.
Yeah, let's, let's make sure we...
I believe there is a limit that he can purchase. And I, this is with the principals too, after the past, as I'm sure Mr. Smith and I have faced this before. I have, we have to...
Okay, I know we had a motion. Did someone second that to, who seconded it? I don't remember. Okay, Ms. Turner did. Okay. All those in favor of moving emergency purchases to our work session, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is sick leave days for non-certified... Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is sick leave days for non-certified personnel.
Mr. Chairman, we've had a non-certified employee ask if she could transfer her sick leave days from one county to another where she had worked previously. I called around to all the counties. I asked the superintendents of what they did about this particular matter. No one except for Lincoln County moved sick leave days between one system and another. And the only reason Lincoln County does it is because Lincoln County has two systems within its county. So they just move it within the county. But now, they do say they move sick leave days between, let's say, the highway department and the education department, but not from school system to school system. So no one does that. But we don't have a policy in place that states that non-certified personnel can transfer sick leave days that we can accept or we will accept sick leave days from another county. And one of the reasons I think that we need to avoid this is, I mean, in my opinion, is that somewhere down the road it could cost us a lot of money.
So your recommendation to the board would be that we craft a policy to not award that benefit?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a motion to that effect? Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Do we have a motion by Mr. Holt and a second by Ms. McMasters? Do we have any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're almost there. Copier contracts?
The last one. I checked with Ms. Moore. Well, let me back up a little. The copier companies around the region, in order to make money and in order, in order to keep the prices of the copiers down that all of our schools and school system uses, is to extend the contract as long as they can. I didn't realize that there was a limit on the, the amount of months that a contract, particularly with copiers, could be. And I had Ms. Moore to find out because she didn't know. And she called some of the state auditors. They recommend that our county systems and our schools not use and sign any contracts that extend for more than 48 months with any of our copier companies. And I just wanted you to be aware of that. And, you know, anything that, that the contract with a vendor, I guess probably we need to bring it before the board so that the board can approve any contracts of this nature. And I don't think it's something we've done in the past because most of us at schools, schools have just signed contracts with the, the copier companies and we just moved on with it. But I would suggest that we start bringing our contracts before the board because if something happens, the board is gonna be responsible for paying those contracts. Even though the schools are gonna have plenty of money to do that, but if something happened, you know, we would be liable.
I was thinking that years ago, that the State Department put on there and they recommended that contracts not exceed 36 months. Have you, are you aware of that or have-
Well, as I said, Ms. Moore called the, the state auditors and got their recommendation and they said 48 months. Yes, sir.
I didn't know that all the contracts that I have signed, I made sure that they had that funds available contract in there with it. That's a, that's a good suggestion.
Do we do this school by school or is it by county? Does every school do their own contract?
Yes, ma'am. This became an issue the other day, I mean, I said the other day, about four weeks ago when one of the vendors came by and we signed a contract to supply some new copiers here in the building. And I questioned the length of the contract. And so I called Beth and found out.
Okay, so you were asking the board for-
Probably, Mr. Chairman, in the future, any, any contracts that we, as schools, our school system or the central office enters into with a vendor, particularly copiers, we just need to bring it before the board so that the board is aware of any contracts that we enter into.
Okay, so, so that's more of a recommendation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, exactly. Okay, so we are through with those and now we would be at the director's report. Do you have anything additional other than that?
No, sir, I'm done.
Okay. We'll open the floor now to the board members for brief comments.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make one comment on this differential pay. I'm not trying to beat that to death. But you know, the, from what I can find out, the school boards, the state asked them to come up with a plan to do this. Can we do this without getting back with the state to change this plan? Can we? I mean, I talked to Beth and she had some questions about that.
We're not trying to change the plan.
You are changing the time, but how many days? You're changing the day length from-
Your question is, is do we have to submit it to the state and them approve it before we actually put it in place?
Do we?
If we were going to change the plan, I think the state would need to know.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Yes, sir. But as far as I'm, I mean, I'm not recommending changing any of the plans. I'm just saying that we should look at our 10-day or five-day policy that was stated in there and just use a little common sense about adhering to that.
But if you change from five days to 10 days, you're changing the plan.
Well, I don't think, did we vote to change it to 10 days?
Yeah.
Okay, we voted to change it to 10 days. So we'll just-
You gotta, you gotta go back to the state before-
Well, let me, let me say this. What we're going to adhere to this year is what was agreed to last year. Okay, and anything, even if, even if we adhere, we agree to something right now, it can't go into effect even next year. It's gonna have to be year after next because school has already begun and you would be in a sense punishing somebody for changing the rules in the middle of the street.
But did we come up with a plan each year? Is this plan good from now?
Yes, sir.
We come up, they have a plan each year?
No, what we will need to do is if this is gonna be a plan, you say 10 days, then we need to submit that to the state and we adhere to that.
Okay, I go along with that.
Okay.
Any other board members have any comments?
I just like to congratulate Kathy White. She might have done. She had a good teacher, didn't she, Ms. Smith?
I tried. She's not here tonight because she's at a ballgame. You know, most, on Thursday nights, most of the principals are in middle school and high, I mean, in middle school have basketball games.
Any other board members have any comments?
This might, but this might be crazy, but I remember years ago, back in the dark ages, it's only Western, wasn't quite as old as it is on now, that when a new employee came into the county that had never been employed by Giles County Board of Education before, the school board asked for them to appear before the board for us to get to know them and welcome them into the county. And I don't think that's really a bad idea because there's so many out there now that we don't know. I just wonder if that's something we want to talk about. But that'd be a work session thing we could talk about. Mr. Smith?
I think, Mr. Holt, you know, when, when we changed from a superintendent of schools to a director of schools and the, the, not the rules, but the, what people did, the roles that people have, I think that all changed because of that. So, you know, because when you said the director's in charge of the hiring, it no longer has to be brought before the board. That's just my opinion of how the rule was, I mean, the law was just-
Yeah, I appeared for years. That's, that's, I just thought about it.
I, I mean, because you're right. That used to be the way it was when we were younger.
Do any other board members have any comments? Okay. Announcements, our next board meeting will be December the 11th at five o'clock here at this location. Next item on the agenda, we do have one public speaker, Ms. Beverly Murray. If you could please come up.
Hello. I just want to say, first of all, I appreciate the prayer and I appreciate the pledge of allegiance. I hope it never stops. And I would like to speak on behalf of a decision that you made earlier about the director of schools. When I graduated from high school in 1969, I don't have a clue as to who our superintendent was. I remember names being spoken over the years like James Abernathy, Marlon Goodman, Leighton Holly, Sam T. Collins. That is from 1969 until 2001. That is four superintendents I remember in 32 years. I came to work in this school system in 1995 and since then, we lost our right to vote for superintendent and the school board elected director of schools. And I haven't gotten over that yet. Since 1995, there has been Sam T., David Little, Alan Parker, T. Jackson, Debbie Braden, Tim Webb, and now Mr. Smith. That's 19 years and that makes seven directors, seven directors. And out of the seven, three were official directors. One of them was born in Giles County, but he didn't bother to hang around. Number one, I think this shows that a director chosen by the school board has not worked, but it's how, that is how it is. Number two, we finally have a lovely boy sitting in the position of director of school. And so far, all I'm hearing is positive things. He was put in the position one night and started working the next morning. Did the school board have someone in place to show him the ropes and what was, what was right and what was wrong? I think I'm right in saying there wasn't. If he made a mistake, he corrected it. I've talked to many, many people and they have said it was the first time in a long time there have been positive things going on. He has put out fires with parents and I can tell you what they are if you ask me privately. He has been in schools and shot teachers by walking into their classrooms. Some of the teachers used to tell me they, when I was on the school board, that they didn't even know what the director looked like. And he confronts issues instead of avoiding them. Parents seem happy because their children are happy. Children are happy because their teachers are happy. Teachers are happy because principals are happy. And I think you get my drift on that. Right now, my thinking on this is that if it works, don't think, don't fix it. And as far as Mr. Smith goes, I think it's working. And I hope and pray to God when you have your work session that you don't try to fix something that's already working. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Murray.
On the differentiated pay, this is confusing now to everybody and I hear it. You're, you want to change it to 10 days, but this year's check- Good day doing that to me.
It's all right. It's all right.
So we're going with the five?
It's all right.
I've been allowing her to tell her that. She won't listen. All right, when they ask me.
It's all right.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion.